It is 4:00 PM on April 15, 2025, and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Work Session to Order. The first item is Clarification of Agenda Items. And of course, I want to welcome everyone to your City Hall. It's beautiful out, so happy that you're here with us. We're going to move on to item number two, Information Packet Discussions, starting with April 3.
Yeah, I'd like to mention IP2, the March 2025 Building Statistics. I appreciate seeing those in here. There was a nice uptick in permit activity, but when you look at it, of the 88 permits, only four of them are for, I think, new single-family homes, duplexes, accessory dwelling units. So one thing that I know Counselor Alter and I learned at the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee meeting is that our community is expected to grow from about 75,000 to about 95,000 people by 2050, and they kind of broke that down by years for us, and that means
We're way behind.
We're going to have, we need about 364 new housing units each year just to keep pace. So just want to maybe keep that on everybody's radar, that we have four permits, and our goal should be somewhere around 364 per year.
Any other items from April 3 IP? We're going to move on to April 10.
Don't want to be greedy, but for IP5 Pending Work Topics, we've had alternative crisis response on the pending work session topics for quite a while, and I'm wondering if it's time to queue up a conversation about mobile crisis and how that program has worked and get some feedback on what it's done. We're nearly three years into that ARPA funding, right? It's going to expire soon, so getting some feedback on how it worked and if it worked would be helpful. Is that something we can just sort of refine that topic to be a specific conversation about mobile crisis, if that's okay with everyone?
I think, yeah, I think that's perfect, since we are talking about the budget today, maybe that will be in the next meeting.
Would you have the time to turn that around quickly?
Well, I would, we're not the service provider, so I would suggest that we work with community to see what works best in their schedule, so you could hear directly from them on how that service is going. If you'd rather the staff gather the information and present it, we can do that, but probably better straight from community.
Yeah, I'd love to hear collaborative effort too between the city then and maybe our
You bet.
Sounds good.
Public safety. Thanks. Sounds great. And then we have the Joint Entities Meeting, which is IP6.
I don't know if we would, again, to put the onus on community for an April 22 readout, but it seems to me like that could be a good joint topic. Maybe just to put a pin in it, and we could get our own update, but then they could return. I know there's one slated for the summer as well. So the greater community and electeds know.
I like that idea.
Right.
So will inquire if community could address the entire joint entities on the 21st?
I think, did you mean, you meant joint entities for the summer joint entities, meaning, right?
I was going to say, I mean, if they can pull something together, but
If not.
Which is pretty short notice.
But it is short notice, so that's why I would say, I did note that there is one in the summer, so that might be, so they don't have to feel under pressure and panicked if they cannot.
Makes sense.
You know, because I'm sure that they want to share.
Sure.
If that's too tight of a timeline, then we could suggest summer, so.
Okay.
That's, sorry, I should be talking to you, Kelly, I apologize.
Is there a projected time for the summer one? I heard some talk between June and July.
It's on, it is, I think it's on the April 3 packet.
I have it on my calendar, I probably can't.
Got you. 21st. Okay. Thank you.
All right, anything else from the IP from April 10? We're going to move on to item number three, University of Iowa Student Government Updates. Welcome.
Good evening. We have about one month left of classes. As you can see, I'm in my midterm chic right now. On a bit of a less happy note, the student body is currently reeling from the recent, five graduate students recently had their visas revoked at the university. And while this hasn't yet happened to any of our undergraduates, we are trying to brace for the worst. So the student government is currently trying to figure out how we're going to respond to this, if we're going to put out a statement. Right now, we're really trying to just support the affected communities as much as possible. We're working with our Directors of Justice and Equity, reaching out to the Graduate Student Professional Government, working with our International Constituency Senator and other international organizations, and just trying to support them as much as we can right now while we figure out what to do. We have been, we have purchased red cards, the immigration cards that have your rights on them, and responsive ICE. We do have a large number of those in our office that we have been giving out to some of our cultural houses, things like that, not really in any official capacity, just trying to do what we can with those. So that's something we're keeping an eye out, and we would love for you guys to keep an eye out for too. I know it's a big federal issue, there's not much you can do, but you know, any support is nice. On a bit of a lighter note, we have a really big event coming up in collaboration with the university's student government and the, I believe it's the LENA Project, L-E-N-A. It's a local environmental nonprofit. We are doing a big event that's going to be on the west side of our campus on Arbor Day, which is April 25, where we are going to be planting 4,000 native trees over by Hillcrest Residence Hall using the Milwaukee Method, which basically just means we propagate the trees indoors and then proceed to transplant them outside after they've grown a little bit. So it's trying to create a biodiverse self-sustaining forest. So we're struggling a little bit, but we're trying to keep as many events going as possible. We have our multicultural organizations, they're throwing a formal in five days, which is on the 20th. So we've got some events coming up, we're just trying to keep our heads up, but that's all we've got for you guys today.
Great. Thank you. We're going to move on to item number four, which is Heart Safe Community Campaign Update.
I did have one thing to say, if that's okay.
Oh, sure. We'll have you, hold on one second. Yes.
Sorry to wait till you get out there, I was finishing my notes, but you know, I just want to say it's really hard to, in these types of situations, to look at like elected officials and university officials and faculty and things like that. But you know, I was recently just reading about, coincidentally, I was just reading about 1968 France and how so many social movements begin with students taking autonomy and not necessarily asking permission from anybody or going through proper channels to protect each other. So I just wanted to put that out there, that you know, the students go away, the university ceases to exist, not the other way around. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item number four, which is Heart Safe Community Campaign Update.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Teague and Council members. We're pleased to be here. I'd like to introduce my colleague, Diane Atkins. Diane and I are both retired from the University of Iowa. She in pediatric cardiology. She has a distinguished background in resuscitation science. She has been, most recently, the chairperson of the Emergency Cardiovascular Care Committee for the American Heart Association, now the immediate past chair and still heavily involved, a member of the Science Advisory Committee of the International Liaison Committee on Resuscitation, and a member of the Pediatric Life Support Task Force. And importantly, she received the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Resuscitation Science Symposium from the American Heart Association last year. So we have some real science backing this up. We are both indebted to the late Richard Kerber, who may be known to many of you, who passed away in 2016, but he really inspired this campaign, and we will tag-team it, and Diane will start, if I can get this to come up. There we go. Okay. So Diane will lead off, go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I would like to say that Jim also is a physician and science-based, and so this truly is a science-based effort. We are the Rotary Kerber Heart Safe Community Campaign, and our, let's see, whoops, that went all the way to the end. Let me get the right button here. Nope, that went to the end as well. Let's see, how about if I do it this way? Nope, still wants to go to the back. All right, here we go. So we are a volunteer organization through Rotary, and our primary initiatives are to improve survival from cardiac, sudden cardiac arrest, along with the Johnson County Ambulance Service. Recently, we are working on a survey to local businesses in Iowa City, as we have a plan now to train members of Iowa City businesses in CPR and to also provide with a cost-sharing basis automatic external defibrillators. And with this, we have an automatic or an AED cost-sharing program. We do provide public education with hands-only CPR. We now have a public library collaboration, and I'm wondering if this isn't one of the only places in the country that has this, where you can check out mannequins from our public libraries, and it has the instructions on how to do CPR and how to teach CPR. And I'm going to, I think we need to look into that, Jim. I bet you we're the only ones. And our overall goal is to improve the statistics and the survival statistics in Iowa City and Johnson County of sudden cardiac arrest. Let me find out where I want to go here. I'm just going to do this on. How bad or how frequent is cardiac arrest? Each year, 356,000 lives in the United States are lost to sudden cardiac arrest. That means about 1,200 people every day are dying of sudden cardiac arrest. This exceeds by more than twice lung cancer, stroke, breast cancer, and AIDS. And it is almost half of those who die of heart disease, which we know is the major killer in the United States. Now, what do we mean by sudden cardiac arrest? It means that the heart has stopped pumping and is no longer delivering blood to the brain, to the heart, and to the kidneys, which are the three major organs that we worry about the most. But the brain is the most important, because the brain has the least capacity to recover from a deficit of oxygen. This is an electrocardiogram of someone who has suffered a sudden cardiac arrest. And I think if, do you see that? Yeah, good. These vertical lines right here are normal heartbeats, and then suddenly, there's this one right here that, for lack of a better way to describe it, goes the wrong way, so it's coming from a different place in the heart. And then suddenly, the heart takes off, and each one of these is basically a heartbeat, but it doesn't allow the heart time to fill with blood, so when it tries to, and it's going like this, it virtually can't pump any blood. That happens in this particular tracing at 6:02 in the morning. Then, as we in the business say, the signal starts to deteriorate, it develops into something that we call ventricular fibrillation, and at this point, it will not convert to anything other than this final line, which we call a flat line, or the heart has no activity whatsoever. The important thing to note is the timeline here. This happens in 10 minutes. That's the maximum amount of time, the maximum amount of glucose that the heart has to keep doing anything, and when that is gone, then the heart can't do anything. That takes 10 minutes. And why is 10 minutes important? Because as you can well imagine, the clock is ticking, and for every one minute that goes by, there is a 10% decline in survival. So at 10 minutes, your chances of survival are virtually zero. At one minute, if CPR can get started at one minute, your survival is probably up around 90 seconds or 90%. Two minutes, down to 80. Five or six, you're already at 50%. And five or six minutes is the average response time of Johnson County ambulance in our urban area. That doesn't include our rural, and we have a top-notch ambulance system here in Johnson County and Iowa City. And even then, the best they could hope for is five to six minutes. But, and here's the but, and this is why we're here. Research has shown that we can have 60% survival if there is an aggressive community campaign that promotes bystander CPR and use of an AED, and with that, a very dense network of automated external defibrillators. And that's what the Rotary Kerber Campaign is trying to achieve. I just want to digress a little bit. Dick Kerber was my mentor, he got me into this field. He was a cardiologist at the University of Iowa, and he was actually one of the founders of the Emergency Cardiovascular Care Committee of the American Heart Association, and that is the group that sets the standards for CPR in the United States. So when you have to go renew, you can blame it on Dick and me, okay? We're the ones who are making you do it. But why is lay-rescuer response so important? Well, one thing is it's a time element. It's absolutely a time element. And the Heart Association talks about a chain of survival, which is number one, recognition and activation of the emergency response system. Number two is immediate high-quality CPR, and number three is rapid defibrillation. And I want to emphasize that this is the only disease that I am aware of, that the initial steps of treatment are best delivered by the person standing next to you. The only thing that I am aware of, where the best person who's standing next to you is the best person to deliver that first treatment, because you only have 10 minutes. And in fact, maybe you only have five or six if you really want a functional brain at the end of it. So the first three steps of this chain of survival are best delivered by a lay-rescuer. And that's why we want to train, and that's why we want to have this dense network of AEDs, and that's why we want to have early notification, and Jim will talk to you about We are a heart-safe community, and you may have seen these signs around, we have them a lot around Iowa City, we have several communities in Johnson County. We have been through a very rigorous process to become designated a heart-safe community. We were the fourth county in the United States to achieve this distinction, and we had to demonstrate that we had a very active community campaign that was ongoing in order to receive this distinction and, number two, to maintain it. Okay, and I'm going to turn this over to Jim now, and he's going to talk about, you want to talk, you want me to do it? Okay. So one of the things that we are incredibly proud of is our system that we call Pulse Point, and this is something that we worked very closely with Fiona Johnson, who is the Director of the Johnson County Ambulance Service and the County Board of Supervisors. This is a telephone app that you can download on your phone, Pulse Point Respond. You can go to it right now, I'll let you bring out your phones, you may not be allowed to, but you can do it here, I won't be offended. And download this app, and at the bottom, under Settings, activate Critical Response. What this will do is it, when dispatch recognizes that a CPR, that cardiac arrest has happened and CPR is needed, at the same time that they dispatch the ambulance, they also will send out this message to all of the phones that are within about 2,000 feet, or, I'm sorry, quarter of a mile, that's about 2,000 feet, within that area, saying CPR is needed here. And it, there's a corresponding app that will also tell you where the closest AED is. We now, we're very proud, we have 5,000 people who are enrolled in Pulse Point in Johnson County. We went live with this on February 14, 2022, with about 1,200 people at that time. My goal was 5,000, we reached it, but now my goal is 7,500, because we know that this makes a huge difference in survival. The data are out there, many, many papers have been written, that when a community has this activated in their community, that survival increases, bystander CPR goes up. Now what about AEDs and where the cardiac arrests are? The picture on the left is data from Johnson County Ambulance that shows where the cardiac arrests occur in our county, and obviously, we're down in here, and you can see there are a couple of hotspots right here, southeast Iowa City right here, more, a little bit east, but also a little bit central. And based on this, we then set up AEDs, and whoops, sorry about that. And this map, is this the biggest that it will go to? There, that's a bit better. So the little blue dots are where all the AEDs that we are aware of in Johnson County and Iowa City. One of the things that you can see right here, and this is the university, and the university has now placed an AED in every building on campus. They did that with Linda Kerber, who was Dick Kerber, is Dick Kerber's wife, in, when we first started this campaign. But you can see, we actually do have a lot of AEDs around, but the problem with these AEDs is that they are in buildings. And buildings tend to be closed up to 12 hours a day, you know, maybe only open from nine to five, so people can't get to them. So the next thing that we have done is, these little red lines are AEDs that are in the yellow boxes, if you have seen them, and I think I have a picture here, I'm going to go, I'm going to go ahead, yes. So these yellow boxes are around town, there's one down on the Ped Mall, that's probably the closest to us right now. We have them all throughout the county. We have now put in about 50 of these AEDs around our county. One of the things we are working on very closely right now is that you will notice that right here in the middle, we don't have one on the university campus, and we're working with the university to correct that problem. But as this map shows, we do have 527 AEDs in Johnson County, and this just shows you in the locations by number where they are, and you can see the university probably has about 150 or so on the entire campus. I've talked about these, these yellow boxes, I should mention, for a variety of reasons, we purchase the boxes that lock, so you do need a code to get into them, to get the AED. And we did that because unfortunately, we were worried about vandalism. It does take a few more seconds, because dispatch has the code, the code is the same for every box in the county, but you have to get that code from dispatch, and we thought that it was better to take those few seconds to get that code than it was to open a box and not find an AED. So they are locked, you call 911, and when you call 911, you can put your speaker on speakerphone, because they will guide you through CPR. If you get nervous, you're frightened, you've never had it, they will guide you through the first steps of CPR, and at the same time, they will give you the code to this box, and they will tell you where the closest one is. They will also know where all of these others are that are in buildings that may be open at the particular time. So a very, very sophisticated dispatch system. These are our AEDs in Johnson County. You want me to keep on? Did you want me to keep on?
No, I can go.
Oh, okay, all right. So these are just some of the pictures of where they have had them. We let the communities put it where they think they're most necessary. Fiona has put them where the hotspots are in Iowa City.
Where's the next slide?
The thing to do is to go right down there.
Okay, thanks, Diane. The, the AEDs, most recently, have been dispatched to remote areas where the ambulance service is tough to get to, and so they, we put things, put them out into Kent Park and down in Kelowna and some other remote areas, and they are being installed as we speak. Also, we're encouraging communities to look for other locations where they would be, they would be useful, and Fiona is working closely with the city, the city managers, Fire Department, Police Department, EMT, to do that. Diane mentioned the library CPR AED program. This is a new program. We donated the training mannequins, the AED trainers for checkout, check it out like a book, and any, your scout troop or your club of any kind, or even an individual family can check them out. There is going to be an inaugural kickoff on June 9 with, at the Iowa City Public Library, also a teen training event on June 18, and also Art Fest, Jazz Fest. We, we, the Johnson County Ambulance Service, with some support from the Rotary trainers, provide service for that. This is just some photos of the training that we've done, we've now trained hundreds, many hundreds, and this is a couple of photos from church, I think this is from Heart Walk. We have Heart Walk coming up here on the first Saturday in, in May again, and encourage any of you who are interested in that to come. Here's some, here's some data from, that Fiona has put together, and this shows bystander CPR, that we have been working very hard through training to enhance, and we have succeeded in Johnson County. We have 70% of sudden cardiac arrests are attended by a bystander, and which a bystander has been involved in starting CPR compared to about 40% nationally. Bystander AED use, this perhaps doesn't look good, but actually, it means that they're getting AEDs to the, to the site more quickly than is on the national average. Survival is about 50% higher than national average. Obviously, we have a long way to go, but we're here at about 17%, whereas it's about 9%, eight to nine percent nationally. So we're well over 50% in terms of survival in Johnson County. Learn hands-only CPR, that is something that we can't emphasize enough, and the action item is, and Diane already emphasized this, is to download Pulse Point, enable critical alerts, and this has gone, excuse me, very well, we have an ad, an internet ad out on this that is driving the increases. We had a 9% increase just this last month in those who have downloaded this app. Another action item is assisting in sending out a short survey to evaluate community AED and CPR training. This we've done in concert with the Johnson County Supervisors and with the Greater Iowa, with United Way, and with the Community Foundation of Johnson County, have sent this out electronically to their members, and we are finding some new AEDs this way, and we are encouraging others to purchase. others to purchase through our cost-sharing program, AEDs. For nonprofits, $500, you get a $2,000 value of an AED with a cabinet. For small business, $600. For a mid-sized business, $750. And for a business that has over 100 employees, it's a half-price, a $1,000 donation. We have been very successful. The community's been incredibly supportive in making donations. We had 54,000 donated last year, and a total of about 240,000 since the beginning of the campaign. With the supervisors, we have put out guidelines, AED placement guidelines, all schools. I think all schools in Johnson County now have AEDs, and government facilities are well-supplied. I'm not sure every possible facility, but that's something. Fiona, Johnson County Ambulance Service has done a lot of work on healthcare facilities are well-supplied, certainly the hospitals, doctors, dentists have them, should have them. Workplaces, we have work to do. We have a number of businesses that have, we've supplied AEDs, more are needed. Public transportation, bus stops, transportation hubs, these are prime locations for these 24/7 yellow boxes. The University of Iowa is installing the six that we donated to them at, at bus stops as good locations. Communities, centers, lobbies, fitness rooms, swimming pools, those are important because sudden drowning is, is a cause of sudden cardiac arrest. Places of recreation, remote sites I mentioned, apartment complexes and senior living buildings, there are a number that do not have them. And of course, these are high-risk in terms, because we know that sudden cardiac arrests go up with age. And finally, places of worship. And we have had considerable success, but certainly not all places of worship have AEDs. So this is the, this is our final slide. You can save a life, call for help, start CPR, restart a heart, save a life. And we are, through our advertising, and we will be doing more of this, we're really trying to get the community residents involved to join the campaign, to identify places that don't have AEDs that should. And hopefully, we will be able to progress and put even more AEDs out, better training. And finally, I'd like to say, we appreciate the support we've had from, from the city of Iowa City, from all of you, from Coralville, from North Liberty, have been partners, all the EMT programs throughout the county have been, have been supportive as well, as well. So we thank you for that, and thanks Mayor Teague for the opportunity to talk today. And we'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Well, thank you so much. A lot's happened since 2022. So thanks to both of you.
I just wanted to add one thing, because we are working very hard with businesses, and businesses are often worried about liability. The data would show that you are more often sued because you do not respond, or you're not prepared to respond than if you do. We have a Good Samaritan law in Iowa that will protect you, and you are more, you are at more risk if you are not prepared than you are if you ignore the situation.
Great, thank you. And it's good to know that there is over 500 of these in Johnson County, and it sounds like there is about 50 outside in the community. So thanks to both of you for all the work that you're doing, and for all the partners. So thanks again for coming today. We're gonna move on to item number five, which is 21 South Lynn Discussion. I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager, Jeff Fruin, to kick us off. And we have two councilors that are recusing themselves from this discussion. And for the record, that is Councilor Mo and Councilor Alter. Welcome.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Jeff Fruin, city manager, happy to be here today with an update on the 21 South Lynn project. We won't go through as much background as we did earlier this year, but just an abbreviated background, this is 21 South Lynn that you see here on the site. The city purchased this property back in 2023. And looking back at the timeline, where we've been on this project and where we are now, we started the public engagement and planning phase back in February of 2024, really made an intentional effort to understand what the community perceived the needs and opportunities are on this site. That led to the development of the RFP, the Request for Proposal Document. We worked on that, went through a draft with you, and finally issued that in September of 2024. And we gave 60 days for responses. We've received those responses last fall, and we've been working through those ever since, and that's where we stand today. We're nearing the end of the RFP phase of this, working towards that council selection of a preferred development concept and team, and we'll hopefully get there here in the next, in the next month or two. So just a quick reminder on the RFP itself, that's what we, that's the document in which we advertised what we're seeking, what our goals are. The text in italics on the blue there is directly from the RFP, and we were very clear what our goals were with this site, and that we were looking for a public-private partnership opportunity, and looking for a project that was going to be in the best long-term interest of the downtown and the larger community. We did talk specifically about the generation of tax revenue to support city services, and again, talked about alignment with a lot of the existing plans, like you'd expect. So alignment with the council strategic plan, along with our downtown Iowa City plan, specifically for, for some of the goals of the project. We talked about a mix of uses. We really stressed an active and engaging first floor. We wanted a mix of housing types at different affordability points for residential uses. We talked about high construction standards and leadership and climate action, and then also recognizing that we wanted contextual architecture with the surrounding properties as well. So we've talked about this a few times with you, and just at this stage in the process, what you should be expecting. These are not fully designed concepts, nor should we expect that. These are concepts that have required a lot of time and investment from the proposing teams, but you should expect that as, as you select a team, a lot of the details will still need to be refined, both on their end and, and on the city's end. So I'll say this probably again at the end, at this point in time, I think we have the level of detail and understanding that you should expect at this stage in the process, and then as we move to a sale agreement or a development agreement, those details will become much more fine-tuned and alignment with your, your goals. Okay, I'm gonna walk you through the two remaining proposals. You, you may recall that we started with three proposals, and you, we had two of the team merge, and you heard from both of those teams at your March 11th council meeting. So tonight's really just designed to get you caught up after staff had a chance to take some more time and review the merged proposal. But we'll start with the Grand Rail Development Team. This proposal is largely unchanged from the original submission. They did present a few new things in their, in their work session presentation to you last time, and I'll quickly summarize those, and then we'll move to the next one. But what's presented here is a six-story project, type 2 steel frame construction. During your last work session, they did indicate that they are happy to consider going up a couple of levels, if that's a desire for the council. So if you wanted to expand the uses, be it residential, commercial, that they feel the building design is flexible enough to move up a couple of stories. They intend to design to lead Silver Standards, include rooftop solar, fully electrify the building, and consider possible rainwater harvesting as some of their leadership and climate action attributes. On the ground floor, they are expressing a space for an entertainment use. That was the original proposal, about 6,300 square feet for entertainment use. But they've also indicated, and at your work session, you saw a couple of different variations on what they could do with that ground floor, including retail, micro-retail, restaurant, and entertainment uses. They do have letters of interest included from the Inglert and Stories Project, as does the other proposing team as well. The concept, as originally proposed, includes three office floors and two residential floors, again, with a kind of a caveat that those are all flexible, depending on final market conditions and city goals. On the residential side, they had 20 total units proposed. Four of those were dedicated to permanent affordable housing. And again, if it goes up to eight stories, if, if we wanted to add the residential component, they expressed a willingness to do so there. So some of the differentiators on this project would be the mid-size structure, that six to eight stories is going to be different than what you see in the next one. They really stress the flexibility across all of the floors, from ground floor flexibility on, on what that may look like, again, from small micro-retail up to large entertainment uses. They've expressed a willingness to, to work with us and respond to market conditions, and that goes up for the upper floors as well. So commercial could become residential, residential could be considered a commercial, and really stressed a flexible approach there. On the financial side, they have projected a $3 million purchase price for the property, and there is no request for any gap financing, which would typically be tax increment financing. So we'll move on to the second proposal. This is the merging of the Salida Partners and Iceberg Development Team proposals, now led by Iceberg, so you'll see it moving forward, just referred to as the Iceberg Proposal. All the same project partners from both teams are still engaged with, engaged in the, in the team, except for Hodge, Imeg, and McClure. This is a 12-story, type 4 mass timber building with the intention to build towards lead Silver Standards. It's anchored by a two-stories, 15-square-foot Inglert Theater venue and eating establishment, and a 15,000-square-foot, two-story Stories museum project on levels two and three. The ground floor also has four micro-retail bays of about 500 square feet each. The fourth floor is designated for office space. Both of the teams have a letter of interest from ACT. There are eight stories of residential in this concept, with 45 affordable units, intended to utilize the 4% LITC offering, that's the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Of those 45, 33 are anticipated to be designated for seniors, 55 and up, and 12 would not have an age restriction. 46 additional units would be market rate, and that would be broken down between short-term rentals, senior, again, age-restricted, and general market rate units. So a total of 91 units, with approximately half of those being affordable through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Differentiators for this project certainly would include the, the scale of it, the, again, shifting from a mid-rise, what you saw earlier, to a, more of what would be a higher, higher rise in, in Iowa City. The use of mass timber, and that's detailed quite a bit in, in their proposal, certainly would be an innovative climate action approach to take. It's, it's not something that we've seen here in Iowa City, and is not to this scale, deployed a whole lot in the state of Iowa or greater Midwest, but is certainly a differentiator for the Iceberg Proposal. And, and then lastly, just the sheer number of residential units and affordable units, right? 45 affordable units is, is certainly a differentiator, and would far out, far exceed what we require in our TIF policy. Remember, our TIF policy requires 15% affordability, so this far would far exceed that requirement. The economics are different between the two, the financial proposals, so this one would have a $2 million proposed purchase price, that's $1 million less than the, the previous one, and this one is requesting and needing gap financing of $9 million, and their team projects that that would take about 15 years to pay back, utilizing 60% of the increment. Right, so those would be rebates, the city would still collect all the taxes, and we would rebate 60% back to them for an estimated 15 years to reach a total of 9 million, are their initial pro forma projections. They also have letters of interest, and actually, you can see very purposefully designed space for the Inglert and the Stories Project. However, their financials do not have any subsidy for those uses, so those would have to be subsidized outside of that $9 million tax increment financing that I mentioned before, and, and the purchase price. Okay, so I'm gonna leave this slide up and just kind of wrap up with some comments. This is the, the same information that's in the memo from your, your packet, and is really intended to be just a quick reference guide. Clearly, there's a lot of detailed information in the proposals, and encourage you to read through those proposals multiple times as you're making your decision, and making sure that you're understanding things. But we'll go through this real quick. We talked about the difference in height, so contextuality with the surrounding. I think both teams can make strong arguments about the contextual architecture, but we do know that this is a topic of interest for Iowa City, or at least historically has been. So note the difference there, difference in construction type. I think both would meet our stated goals in the RFP, but clearly a different approach there. Ground floor uses, I think, are very similar as presented. I think they're, they're both presenting, they're kind of leaning into the entertainment uses, willing to do small retail, restaurant, and, and those things, both have letters of interest from the Inglert and Stories, but neither provides that financial support for them to enter in there with, with subsidy. Clearly, they would work with either of those two users with, if they could afford to do so themselves. We'll see the breakdown in affordable, in, in the residential uses, the 20 total units for Grand Rail, which could be a little bit higher if they do expand to an eight-story concept or seven-story concept, and then the 46 affordable, 45 residential units. We didn't talk about valuation at all, but staff has worked with the Iowa City Assessor's Office and put forward our best estimate on total valuation. So these numbers may be slightly different than what you see in their proposals. These are numbers that staff has put together, based on our conversations with the assessor. So total valuation difference of 21.5 million to 32.3 million. You'll notice the gap shrinks a little bit when you start to look at taxable valuation. So a, the, the gap between total valuation is, is about 11 million, but that gap shrinks to about 6 million roughly, when you look at the taxable valuation of the two properties there. We talked about the purchase price being a million-dollar difference between the two, and then you have one that is not requesting TIF, and one that's requesting 9 million in TIF over an estimated 14 years. So to wrap up, to kind of turn over to you, you know, your, your task next is to select that preferred development concept and, and team. And you should remind yourself of those RFP goals, and we're looking to do what's in the best long-term interest of downtown Iowa City and the larger community. So really keep that public benefit in mind. And I tried to frame that up for you. You have to look at, it's kind of why I started to call out the differentiators, that's why we have this table. You've got to look at what those differences are between these proposals, be it scale, be it the financial package, be it the number of affordable units, and you have to really start to put a value to those differences, and see if that is worth the financial differences presented in those, in those two. You do not need to make a decision tonight. I'd recommend that you probably don't. You want to spend some more time reflecting, give the public a little bit more time to reach out to you and speak to you if they want to provide that input. We've tried to be very transparent through this whole process, and I think taking a little extra time to allow for that engagement is, is positive. However, I do think we're, we're ready to move. As I said earlier, you should not probably expect a whole lot more detail. If there's clarifications that can be made, that's great, but I think the teams have put a lot of time. put a lot of time and investment in, and probably don't need to ask them to do more at this stage until we're ready to select a preferred development team and concept. And then there will certainly be more time and investment from that particular group. I did lay out one alternative in your memo in terms of moving forward. You can certainly start your discussions tonight and discuss what you're seeing in the proposals. On your May 6 meeting, if you are so inclined, you can ask for the teams to confirm or modify their financial expectations to maximize the appeal and private commitment, and certainly account for all the time that's passed. Remember, these original proposals were due many months ago, and there's been a lot of changes. I think before entering that next phase, it's not a bad idea to have those teams confirm or submit last opportunity, a last opportunity to submit modifications to their financial projections, so that nobody's caught off guard going into that next phase. And then you would have that information and ready to make a decision at your May 20 meeting. Again, that's one suggestion. You're free to take as much or as little time as you want in making this decision, but wanted to create some path that you could consider in your discussions tonight. I'm happy to answer questions. Otherwise, we'll turn it to you, Mayor, and to facilitate the discussion.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
I have a question to Jeff. Question, yes, Jeff, question, if you can just remind me, maybe you don't have that on the top of your head, but if we would have sold the land, how much this land, like, worth?
We bought the land for $4.5 million. That was responding to what we believed would be the most likely suitor in the market at the time we bought it, which was what we believed to be probably out-of-state, real estate investment focused on student housing. So, looking at some of the other kind of transactions in the area over the last few years, we thought that was a likely outcome, and we also felt like there was a potential that more land could be assembled next to this parcel for an even larger project. So, if we sold it today, I couldn't tell you. I think what you're seeing here is, you know, some local teams here that are presenting what they feel like they can do. But I don't think, I don't think if we put it for sale and tried to recoup four and a half, that we would find a buyer at that level right now, unless we were to open it up to that large-scale student housing market, then we might be able to recoup that cost.
I don't know. Thank you.
Did you have something?
No, no.
Okay. I was curious about, just clarification on the senior housing aspect of the Iceberg proposal. I was aware of a situation, and like, I live a block away from Market House, which is on Lynn, and there's a situation where, you know, I've tried to parse this together myself, where the original proposal, back in 2017, when that was going to be developed, was to have there be floors dedicated to senior housing. And then they came back at like, one of the last meetings or the last one, and said, "Actually, we can't do this legally to have assigned senior housing in a building. It has to be the whole building," or something like that. Can you speak to that? Because I would hate for something like that to happen again.
Yeah, we did cover that with the Iceberg team. You're very accurate in how you were describing the Market House project, and Mayor Protem brought this up at the last meeting, too. That was the original intention of that project, and as we worked through that project, we came to that same conclusion that the developer did, in which it would not be allowed. In conversations with the Iceberg team, they were able to present to us an example of where they have successfully done that in a different state. And they were very clear in that it was not easy, it was very time-consuming to get the approvals from HUD, and that we should expect the same. So, that's why in the memo, I note that, you know, there's no guarantees that we could get that same HUD approval on this project. It sounds like it was a very difficult process to get that HUD approval. But I wouldn't put it out of the realm of possibilities. If they've shown they've done it once, then I would say it quite possibly could happen again. I think if you move forward with that proposal, you have to know that that mix may not be attainable, right? It may be our goal, we may work for it, but at the end of the day, if HUD has a change of opinion, or we get a different take from HUD, we may have to back off that.
Okay. Because I was just curious, because, you know, currently in Market House, I think it's just a lot of like, private condos being sold and stuff like that, and like Airbnb usage. So I was just wondering if hypothetically, if some type of provision could be put in place where if the senior housing aspect doesn't work, someone is still obligated to have them be affordable units, maybe not affordable senior units, something along those lines, just to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Yeah, so in the development agreement, we, in this case, in the development agreement, we would really focus in on those 45 units of affordable housing, and we would have protections in place to ensure that affordable housing is maintained. We wouldn't necessarily probably focus in on the age-restricted piece, unless that was a stated priority, and that was a must-have for that development agreement. But in the case that Iceberg, the Iceberg proposal, right, they're getting annual TIF rebates for 15 years, so that's kind of the hook. If they don't comply, and we find that they're not meeting the standards of the development agreement when it comes to those affordable units, they will no longer be able to collect on that TIF, and there could be a recapture of any TIF paid.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, I really struggle understanding the total violations and the taxable violation. Is this something like the $15.6? Is this like this date, or this is a request, or this is what it happened all the time?
So the valuation, that would be the valuation of the building, right? It's not the construction cost. The construction cost is going to be a lot higher, but the valuation is what the Iowa City Assessor is going to say it's worth. So we'll take the Grand Rail example. There's, they're going to say that total assessment is 91.5, but what the Assessor's Office did is they looked at those rollbacks. So residential properties are only paying, right now, 47% of their value. Commercial properties pay 90% of their value, and that's why you see that difference there.
Yeah, that means this is what's going to happen for the rollback, for business kind of thing.
Correct, and that's a big unknown, right? This taxable, this spread between the total valuation and taxable valuation is based on today's tax law. And we do know that there has been legislation already submitted or proposed this year that would eliminate those rollbacks. So, very much can change based on future tax law.
Thank you for covering that.
So I have, well, Juan, thank you for walking us through this memo, and thanks to the teams for submitting. I think it's great that we have some opportunity here in Iowa City that does kind of meet the needs of our community, meet kind of the highlights of our RFP. But there are some questions that I have relating to the overall cost, long-term, and I guess is more of a comment to the developers as far as what I'm requesting, and that is any other financial last-minute stuff that you all want to present, I do welcome it. We know that for the Grand Rail, possibly eight stories, and so it would be nice just to look at what that could look like. We are in the 11th hour, as we all know, and so if we're going to be allowing the community some time to respond, as well as the council some time to look at the proposals, and we're talking about May 20, we kind of need to move quick on getting some last-minute numbers. So that's for Grand Rail. For Iceberg, certainly, you know, the TIF financing, we were expecting on some level that it could be a possibility with any other proposals. So the $9 million, that it is what it is. But our city manager has stressed concern about where's the tenant build-out costs, the rent subsidies, how does all of this play into this? And I do believe that it may be important, well, it's going to be vital, that we understand from Iceberg how they're planning to make this financially solvable. So, if you all can get that to us as soon as possible, I think that'd be great, because there's some great opportunity in each one of these proposals, and just want to make sure that I have time, as well as the public have time, to navigate through any of the last-minute numbers.
So Mayor, I think it's, on the Iceberg piece, it's a topic that we spoke directly with their team about. Clearly, they've designed that space to showcase the Stories Project and Inglert Theater. But with the pro forma not reflecting that, what they would provide is kind of what would be called a white box or kind of a vanilla space. So, they would not build out that space for either of those entities, and those entities would have to come up with those dollars themselves, not only the build-out costs, so you're building your restaurant, your theater, whatever that may be, your museum. They would have to privately fundraise or leverage existing funds that they have to be able to do that, or they could return to the city separately and ask you for additional financial support. But that's what they would do. They'd be charging those commercial rents, and if the, in this case, the Inglert or the Stories could not independently secure that financing, then they would move on, and they would find market rate users for that space. So it may have to require a little bit of redesign to accommodate additional users, but you should expect restaurant, retail types of users on that first floor.
No, thank you for that. And again, I think with this proposal, my assumption is, it's, well, provide whatever you all can. How about that? I'll just leave it at that.
Just kind of agreeing, yeah, and I also would like to see the, with some of the same things, the eight-story versus the six-story, what that would look like. And then kind of along with that, sort of with the letters of interest, so everybody sort of, the public especially, understands, that's not a commitment that they'll be in there, it's a letter of interest. So it's not binding, and that's equal across the board, across both proposals. And so, to the extent that any thought of what the Plan B would be for those spaces, for viability, I think I'd be interested, you know, to speak to that maybe in some way, realizing that I don't expect anybody to go out and find the other people, just kind of what the flexibility would be like, and how that might change the financial picture of the projects one way or the other.
When I look at the project number one here, the Grand Rail, it's, even though you say like, affordable unit is four, and, you know, and market price is 16, but that's because it is two-floor of this, but here, like, eight-floor, and 46, maybe four times eight, 24, if they built eight-floor. But what I really interesting to see, I am looking for affordable housing here. 45 affordable, I want more details about that. And also, speaking about, do we want family to live there or not? So, is that a one-bedroom apartment, is this could be a two-bedroom, so to see like, if we can accommodate family there? Also, I like the LITC, but the more I think about it, I guess feel like we need permanent affordability. Our problem is like, we have something, and I believe LITC is 30 years, or how long is LITC, Jeff?
Be minimum of 30 years.
So, either to see more like affordability period, or maybe to see like more, yes, permanent affordability. Yeah, I guess like, we, each time we have something affordable, and suddenly, after many years, it's not going to be affordable, yeah, I feel like we're losing, we're not like, we're going to start from the beginning. Yeah, that's what I feel about those. So I would like to learn more from both sides, like, if they can, like, you know, increase that.
Yeah, I guess I'll just reemphasize what you just mentioned about the affordable units. Again, we know that there is a sunset to those. If it's LITC, I'm assuming that the affordable units does not have a sunset to it?
The Grand Rail, you mean?
Not the Grand Rail.
The LITC?
Oh, yes, the Iceberg does, but not the Grand Rail.
But I think if they did like, LITC, they have to, like, if there is...
They're not proposing.
So there's ways to accomplish affordability, permanent affordability through the LITC program.
Okay, there's a way.
And the Housing Fellowship is listed as an interested partner, not really fully fleshed out on the Iceberg proposal, and is presumed to be a potential partner in the purchase of the units in the Grand Rail. So, a good example of a LITC that could have permanent affordability is the Delray Project in Iowa City. Because of the Housing Fellowship's role in that project, after that required 30-year period, the Housing Fellowship, a mission-driven nonprofit, will become the owner of that structure, and presumably maintain that permanent affordability going forward. So I think the team at Iceberg understands our desire to make those affordable, permanently affordable units, and is willing to figure out a way to memorialize that in a development agreement. We just don't have all those details, and we probably won't have those details at this stage, but council's been pretty clear in really pushing for that permanent affordability, and I feel both teams are presenting that they're willing to meet that permanent affordability goal.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I heard that, but I was just like, to be completely, so post, people can bring like, more unit or whatever. Anyway, I'm blinking now, but I was trying to say something. When I remember it, I will say it.
Any other comments by council?
Yes, I remember my comment. Thank you. Yes, you know, early I asked about the price, and how much if we want to sell this rent right now, because you want to see like, $3 million here, $2 million there, and we giving TIF here, no, TIF here, and all this kind of thing. Like, I feel like, since we are going to give this for $3 million or for $2 million, this is less than the various price. And I'm sure, even though we rushed to buy, that's why maybe at that time, the price like, was high, because the city wanted, sometimes something for the city is going to be expensive than other people. But as you said, that, because we don't want to do it like, maybe another student's unit housing. But, you know, we need something like, in exchange of that, maybe a two-apartment, just like the one that we have in Kansas City, to be given to the, you know, the public housing, and will be something like, belong to the city, managed by the public housing for us, and just doing that, you know? So I'll think about it. I just feel like, maybe we need something like, exchanging on giving, like, less price for the land.
I'm with you there, as far as just making sure that the development teams understand that we're looking for something that really is in the best interest of our community. We know that you all know the affordability needs for housing. This is something that is a part of our strategic plan, and as the Mayor Protem just mentioned, it would be great if we can try to, in a way, justify some of the opportunities that is happening with all of these proposals. So, yeah, I think, I'm looking forward to whatever you all present when you come back.
One last thing, Jeff. Did you say that the Housing Fellowship expressed interest?
They're a listed partner in both projects.
Okay, and is that for, like, how many of the potentially affordable units?
It's not, it's not, it's not 100% clear in the Iceberg proposal. In the Grand Rail, they're the presumed buyer. Again, nothing is guaranteed, as Councilor Harmsen said, but they're the presumed buyer of the affordable units in the... of the affordable units in the Grand Rail, and there is a presumption that they will be integrally involved in the affordable units of the Iceberg proposal. We just don't know those details yet. And to be fair to the Fellowship, they have made no commitments. They've expressed that interest in being part of the solution, but they've got to see the terms before they make those commitments, too.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, if I can just recap, I want to make sure council expectations are the same, because what I'd like to do is get something in writing to both teams, so it's very clear what we're asking for, and give them a very clear deadline that they can respond. So do you want to pick this conversation up on May 6? Or do you wish to just have these responses ready to go for a May 20 meeting in which you think you can continue the conversation?
I do think it might be helpful if we can have it by May 6. That way, it'll be in our information packet. Council can bring it up and discuss it should we want. We could even have it as an item on our May 6 and talk about it as much or as little as we want. If it's not possible by May 6, then of course we'll do it the 20th. But that'll allow the council and the public sometime to digest this.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, and then we'll wordsmith this appropriately when getting the communication out to the two teams that are here listening. What I'm hearing is confirmation of the financial numbers with a specific request to Grand Rail to say if it goes to an eight-story concept, do those numbers change at all, right? If not, just confirmation that those are the numbers, and if they need to change them for whatever reason, or they want to change them to broaden the appeal, they can. On the Iceberg side, there was just clarification from both teams. I'll get it in writing that they understand the city's commitment that we're looking for is permanent affordability. We don't have to figure out all the details yet, but making sure that there's an acknowledged permanent affordability expectation. I've heard a question specific to the Iceberg team about if they could describe the flexibility of the building, should the Engler and/or Stories project not be able to be incorporated? And then Mayor Protem had a question about the unit types for the affordable units. So we'll have them state for the affordable units that are targeting if they have ideas at this stage and on bedrooms, number of bedrooms per unit. I capture everything there? Okay, so we'll put that in writing. We have an extra week before your next council meeting, so there'll be a couple weeks for the teams to respond, but the goal will be to get this in that Thursday packet before your May 6 meeting. Put this on your work session, allow you to continue the discussion. Would you like the teams to be here in case you have questions?
Yeah, would be good.
Okay, we'll ask if they can be here, if they can have representatives here, and we'll go from there.
Great.
Anything else that I missed there, or we feel good?
Okay.
Thank you for that moment of clarification.
I said about the price of the land, through that there, so they can...
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to, well, we'll wait for our colleagues to come back.
Yes.
Thank you. You guys are a minute and a half behind digitally, so.
Yes, yeah.
Always like that.
Knock on the door.
We are on to item number six, which is our council updates on the signed boards, commissions, and committees. I know we'll be doing assignments later today, so.
I think we should, oh, we're going to do assignment later.
Later today.
It's on the agenda.
We cannot talk about that now.
No, I think it's just a reminder to look at it and see where your interest is.
I just believe that, you know, maybe we can, this is a good time to give maybe Oliver about what he think it should be done for those, so later we can be ready to do it.
For the, for each committee?
Yeah, because, you know, maybe we don't need to do anything, so nobody can pick up some, because I think Oliver expressed interest just to take over whatever Andrew used to have, and that's will make it easy. If everybody agree, of course.
If everybody agrees with that, I thought that it would just make it easier on everybody, and also, you know, I could, you know, get experience wherever, so, yeah.
My only hesitation is let's make sure we have that discussion at the formal, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay. Anything else on council updates? Here and now, we are adjourned until our 6 p.m. meeting.